All right.
Well, I have thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds left.
Before starting.
All right, well, I already hit it. According to this, it's six thirty.
Everybody can get ready and get set to go.
All right, why stop at it?
We'll open this meeting at six thirty, and if you'll join me. For pledge.
The United States of America, the Republic of America, we stand as a nation, a republic, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a roll call, Angela, if you would, please.
Commissioner Wood?
Here.
Commissioner Melter?
Here.
Commissioner Walthius?
Here.
Commissioner Journey?
Present.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum. Commissioner Parker did call me, let me know he's out of town and won't be unable to make it.
Okay. We are at this point where we would invite anyone in the audience who has something that they would like to discuss or address the planning commission that is not on the agenda. We would open that up to you now. Okay, we'll move ahead. We all had a chance to look at the minutes. And any corrections? Let's have a motion from somebody.
I would move to approve the planning commission meeting minutes of July sixth, twenty twenty-three, as presented.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tonight, we have two public hearings. And if you'll bear with me, I have a few things that I need to read. And acquaint you with the procedure. We'll open each hearing individually. We will review the hearing procedure. It's just coming up. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which a person believes apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. So I will then ask the planning commission members if they have any personal bias, any conflict of interest, or any ex parte information, meaning if we have talked with any of the applicants prior to this meeting or had personal information. We will have the staff report. Angela will give us a review of each application. And it is during this time that we can converse with the staff and ask any questions that we would like. We will then entertain the applicant's testimony. And we would invite anybody that's speaking to come sit in the chair and identify yourself by name and address. We will then listen to the proponents' testimony. That is testimony for those wishing to speak in favor of the application. We will entertain any opponents' testimony. Those that are wishing to speak in opposition to the application. And then any neutral testimony, neither in favor or opposition to the application. We will then close the public hearing. We'll have a discussion and decision among the planning commissions. And at that point, we'll make a motion to approve, deny, or approve with conditions, or continue the application to another meeting. If there is an objection to the decision, it can be appealed to the city council. Planning commission shall set the number of days or the appeal period at the time the city council goes through the public hearing process all over again. Recommendations made by the planning commission to the city makes it a final decision. If you have any questions, we'll wait and direct your questions to the planning commission. With that said, we will open the first. Excuse me, I gotta get beyond the minutes. Okay, the first land use application. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a metal RV cover.
Can you open the public hearing?
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at
Thank you.
six thirty-six. My apologies.
Not a problem.
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a metal RV cover. The applicant is applying for a conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point ten point zero four zero I. Secondary use on a lot without a primary use. Tax Lot Three Hundred contains approximately seventeen thousand one hundred and twenty-nine square feet and is in the residential low-density zone. You've already got the information about the property owner and the location. And let's turn some time over now then to the staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Walthius. As stated, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a metal RV cover. The subject property is not in a special flood hazard area. It does not, does not have any local wetlands on it. It has frontage and access off Juniper Street, and the subject property has access to city water and sewer in Juniper Street. Scroll in here real quick. All right, a conditional use shall be approved if the applicant provides supporting evidence that all requirements of this development code relative to the proposed use are satisfied and demonstrates that the proposed use also satisfies the following criteria. The use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district and complies with the development requirements of the underlying zone. Staff finds the subject property is in the R-one zone to construct a metal RV cover. The applicant is applying for a conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point one zero point zero four zero I. Secondary use on a lot without a primary use. Building permit eight-two-seven dash two-three dash zero-zero-zero-one-five-eight dash dash S T R is pending the approval of C U twenty-three dash two zero-two. Per the building department comments in section two above, the building department shall require an accessory structure to have a foundation and be fixed or attached to that foundation. Staff recommends a condition of approval that the metal canopy be fixed or attached to a foundation. With the above conditions, staff finds the application complies with the criteria. The characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, and location of improvements and natural features. Staff finds that the subject property has an existing one thousand four hundred and forty square foot metal building. The site size, dimensions, locations, and topography are adequate for the proposed use. The existing gravel driveway was installed under right-of-way permit R O W zero eight dash two zero one four with a requirement for a hard surface approach. The past owner installed the gravel driveway and allowed the permit to expire without completing the hard surface approach. Staff shall require a condition of approval that a new right-of-way permit and hard surface approach will be required. With the above conditions, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. The proposed development is timely considering the adequacy of transportation system, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. Staff finds that the proposed RV canopy is timely. The property abuts Juniper Street and shall allow for adequate transportation needs to the facility. There are no residential dwellings proposed with this application. However, there are city water and sewer services available on Juniper Street should there be future development. Based on the above information, staff finds that the application complies with these criteria. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in any manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying zone. Staff find all abutting properties are in the residential low-density zone. The proposed metal canopy is proposed to be located at the rear of the lot near an existing shop. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area. And based on the above information, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Any negative impacts of the proposed use on the property and on the public can be mitigated through application of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval that include but are not limited to those listed in this chapter. Staff has not identified any negative impacts to the adjacent properties to ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code. Staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in section four of this report. Based on the above information, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Conditions of approval. An approving and additional use permit application the planning commission may impose in addition to those standards and requirements expressly specifically by this chapter, additional conditions determined to be necessary to assure that the proposed development meet and the design criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. I'm not going to go through the suggested ones. Staff finds the provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the planning commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the planning commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interests of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in section four of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to the application. Inclusion and recommendation, the planning commission approves this application. Staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below are required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria in section three and as required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board, Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba, may only be based on review and design criteria contained in section three. Recommending conditions of approval for C U twenty-three dash zero-two. One, the final configuration of the proposed metal RV cover shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. See attachment B, the metal cover shall be fixed or attached to a foundation. A new right-of-way permit and hard surface approach will be required. And the property owner shall obtain and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits as and requirements. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of C U twenty-three dash zero-two. Planning Commission action. In acting on a conditional use permit application, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and design criteria. If approved, the planning commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in section four. Appeal period pursuant to O R S two-two-seven dash one seven-five, the planning commission may establish an appeal period of not less than twelve days from the date of the written notice the planning commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a twelve-day appeal period from the date that the notice of the decision is mailed. Order after the planning commission decides, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval of the application as approved. Motion after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. One, move to approve application C U twenty-three dash zero-two, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. A setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application C U twenty-three dash zero-two, which includes adopting the findings of fact. No need to specify, including the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other questions from planning commission.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions of staff?
Does the applicant own? Oh, I turned it. There you go. There we go. Does the applicant own adjacent property? No. No. And they're just wanting to construct an RV cover to park an RV. Is there any concerns that there might be living in that? No, not from discussions that staff have had. It's just a store of the RV on there. There's already a shop on there. Okay. So they're just going to add the RV cover for the, for the RV storage. And the previous right-of-way permit for a hard surface approach, they put in the gravel but didn't concrete it? The previous owner did not do the twenty-foot hard surface approach. But it was a condition? Yes. Do we know why that wasn't enforced? That was back in twenty fourteen, so no, I can't take that. Come on, way before my time. Unfortunately, no. And wouldn't that have been a code enforcement issue?
So typically with a right-of-way permit, the main enforcement mechanism is that somebody wants a final occupancy of a home.
Okay.
And so that's the primary mechanism we have of enforcing those things is that it prevents them from getting that certificate of occupancy. When you have a parcel that doesn't have a home on it, it makes it significantly more difficult to enforce simply because the property owner can walk away. They don't need to occupy the property because there's no home there. And that leaves the city in an awkward position of, if we want to really enforce, we can fine and we can lean, and then we don't. So it is possible to penalize people, but in the past, there has been less motivation to do things for things like this, where it's just something that is an improvement that was never actually built. Whereas if we don't get complaints from neighbors and it's not holding up any construction, a lot of times those say in the past, those things just haven't been enforced simply because of attitudes toward property rights, I'd say.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is there any plans to put a home in the front portion of this plot property?
You would have to ask the applicant. I don't know.
No.
You have to wait.
Absolutely.
I know, wait, hold on.
Yeah.
You will have your opportunity, I promise. If there's no plans for a home, why do we need a right-of-way? I mean, it's all one piece of property that fronts on a city street.
So a right-of-way permit is typically, is required whenever you are connecting to the street, whether it's through water and sewer services, or even if it's just a driveway. And so in this case, the, the previous owner wanted a driveway that accessed Juniper Street, and so filled out a, a right-of-way permit for that. The hard surface approach was required. The, the paving was required as part of that permit, but was never done. And so now that there is a proposed structure to be placed, one of, one of the recommended conditions is to continue to require that hard surface approach, which our code requires for any, any development.
The existing building, it's been there for a significant amount of time, right? For fifty years or more?
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, the, previously, the, the house next door and this property were both owned by the same person.
Okay.
And so it was treated as kind of an extra yard, is that not? Yes.
And at some point, there was a property line division?
No, they were always, they were always separate properties, but the same owner owned both, but now they've both been sold to different parties.
I see. Okay, thank you. Are there any plans for improving Juniper Street sidewalk, curb, and gutter?
The city does not have any, any projects in place at this time. Certainly, there's a desire to. It's a matter of funding.
Okay.
And we would take steps to be sure that that could happen.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? All right, we'd invite the applicant to come forward.
If I may, you did not ask about ex parte information or bias or anything like that, so you could do that.
Does the planning commission have any bias?
No.
Start out one at a time. Okay, is there any conflict of interest?
No, no.
No. And any ex parte information?
No.
I did drive by. Whether that's ex parte or not. Okay. With that, we would invite the applicant to come forward and state your name and address. And tell us what you'd like to accomplish and why.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lea Faya. I am the property owner at twenty-six sixty Juniper Street. It's a shop garage building. I don't live there. There is no home. There's not water or sewer there. I purchased a motorhome, almost a new one. They're very expensive, and I'd like to maintain it. And keeping it inside a building is an important thing for doing that. And I'm just wanting to put up a simple aluminum canopy building. I can show pictures of it. It's quite good-looking. I put about fifty thousand dollars into this property. Made it a lot better. I've remodeled the building. It's going to get painted eventually. I put in new, some new fencing, cleaned up, trimmed the trees up. All the neighbors say that I've done a good job with it, and they're surprised that I need a permit to do this. My neighbors are Jeff and Tiffany Lynn. I'm sure you know who they are. And they, they are, they're not opposed to it, and they're really the only people that would see this building because it's pretty well hidden from view other than on Juniper Street. It's about a hundred and sixty feet back from the street. And the houses that face it don't really see it, but it's not an ice or by any means. One of the issues I have with this right-of-way and the hard surface, I went down the Mountain View Road from Long Street to Junior High, and I counted thirteen gravel driveways in a half-mile section. Plus, there's Jefferson Street is also a gravel road. And then from Juniper Street at Mountain View to Twenty-Ninth by the little Ash, let's see, it's Ashbrook Park, I believe. There's three driveways that are part concrete and part gravel, and there's three gravel driveways, fourth county mine. And so it kind of seems like I'm being picked on with having to have that. I bought the property. There had to be right-of-way to buy the property, or how could it have been sold to me? So I have an issue with that part. The other things I'm concerned, it says I have to have a foundation. Well, this is a portable building. And the plans that I submitted, they drilled six-inch deep or six-inch wide, twenty-four-inch diameter holes with concrete with anchor hooks every five feet at the structure, which should be more than adequate for an aluminum building with steel beams. So I'm not sure what their criteria is on the foundation. It's not, you know, it wouldn't be continuous like a house would be because it's not a house. I can show pictures of what the building is. But other than that, you know, I'm good. But I'm trying to do the right thing here, and I've, I've spent money in the town and tried to support it. And I'm a good citizen. I just retired from Smith Glass last year, and I'd been there for years. And my dream was to have a shop garage man cave, so to speak, to not have to be no time to enjoy my retirement tinkering on my hot rods. And, and I'm a good neighbor. I'm not there making noise late at night or anything, so that's my case. But the foundation, there's no criteria on it, and then nothing on this hard surface. But I have new pack gravel. If anyone, I'd be happy to take anyone by and show them the property and what I'm proposing. And it's a big improve from when I bought it.
What is the shop being used for now?
Basically, it's a, for storage for cars. If I want to work on my car, I will, but it's not a business at all. Just private garage to work on my own cars when I want to and to store them there. I have a TV there, a refrigerator, a microwave, and a couch and a stereo system. So just a place to go have a good time and, and enjoy life and, and store my cars where I don't have room at my house for all of them and my motorhome.
I apologize because I didn't quite catch where you lived. Would you mind repeating that?
What's that?
Where do you live?
Lebanon, Oregon.
Oh, in Lebanon.
Yeah, I couldn't find property there that was suitable, either that or it was too expensive. And so I found this property, and it was perfect for what I needed, other than running into a little roadblock on doing my RV canopy. But other than that, it's been good. All the neighbors have been friendly and nice, and I've got, have a pretty good impression of Sweet Home, you know, at this point.
Commissioners, can I clarify? So the hard surface approach only has to be twenty feet. It's the twenty-foot. It doesn't have to be fully paved. It's just our, our required twenty-foot hard surface approach from, from the property line back. So the entire thing does not have to be paved, so it's just twenty feet.
How come all the other people around don't have to have it?
They, that was before, it's, it's contingent on development, so they've been in place longer than the requirement has been there. And so new development triggers the requirement.
But my shop's been there since nineteen seventy-two, and that's a primary building.
No. The, well, it, it's technically not a primary structure because the lot doesn't have a primary structure.
Right, it is not a house.
The, in this case, the shop, the, the canopy becomes the structure that triggers the requirement.
Okay.
That's the, the new development.
So twenty feet is that from the street or from the property?
From the property line at the, at the right-of-way.
But you also have to pave from the street to your property.
Okay, so approximately twenty-five.
Something like so.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to do the entire thing.
And then to clarify on the, on the foundation requirement, so the, the reason for that is simply to state that it has to meet building code. And so foundation can be, for different structures, foundations take different forms. For a, for a canopy-like structure, each leg is going to have some form of, of anchoring that would, that would count as that. I'm not a building inspector, so I'm not going to be, I'm not the expert on that, but if our building inspector is satisfied, that meets the criteria.
So how do I find out what that?
That'll be, that's part of your building permit.
So when, so this part, when you, when we review this, that's when it will be reviewed.
Okay, that's okay.
So, yeah, I can't, I couldn't say exactly what is going to be required, but the building inspector will have, will be able to tell you what each leg needs to have underneath.
Twenty feet and from the property line to the street as well, so about twenty-five feet as far as, like, well, that's not as bad as it could, I guess.
Yeah. But it's, it's, again, it's not, it's not trying to pick on you. It's, it's whenever we have new standards, we, we can't go back and force existing houses to meet that new standard. It's new development, new structures that trigger that.
I correct in assuming that the reason it has access to Juniper Street right now is because there was at one point a permit that was not fulfilled. And so when you bought the property with the driveway, you bought a property with an unfulfilled permit. And so that's, that's why we want to make sure we add it here because it was supposed to be there when you purchased it. And
That wasn't my fault.
Right.
No, of course not.
I mean, if we, if, if you purchase, when we purchase a property that has things that weren't done or that the city expected to be done, unfortunately, sometimes those, those things surprise us when we try and do new things to that property. And this is just one of those things, and it is common. We add it to just about any developed property with a gravel driveway. This would be part of their permit and part of improving Sweet Home, as of.
Well, I've reviewed, and that property's changed hands four times in the last twenty years. And I know that Kelly and Mindy Lee, who I purchased it from, they didn't own, they owned a house next to it, which they sold separately. But when they bought the property, that road and access and gate that was there was there long before that. So they didn't actually put that in. That's been there for years because that property's been sold separately before. And I can even provide the owner's names. I contacted the Lynn County Public Records.
And I don't want to go in this too much, but the unfortunate reality is that when properties are sold, there's no, there's no approval by the city for properties to change hands. There's nothing that, that goes through, goes past my desk, and there's no, there's no regulations that say we can control that anyway.
That would have warned me.
Yeah, so, so it's only when new structures are added that we then have some ability to regulate and we can get involved. And we always recommend everyone do their due diligence when they purchase a property to find out what the conditions are because the realtors don't always know what building permits have been done in the past.
Right.
For example, there is a house on Main Street near the old Cedar Shack that was placed there and never had a building permit for that structure being moved there. And so it recently changed hands. We had a number of people contacting us about it. We had to tell each one of them, you have a lot of work to do because that building was never We had to tell each one of them, you have a lot of work to do because that building was never permitted in the first place. And um, even though it looks like it's been there for years, it's not occupiable because it was never placed there legally. And never, and so this is, that's an extreme example, but this is kind of the same thing.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I appreciate all the improvements, all the improvements that you made.
Yep.
And that you're looking to even do further improvements.
This won't be an ice or.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I believe that it will look nice on the property and it will fulfill what you need. Um, and help just improve property.
I planted an orchard there and a small one, of course, but I've tried to make it look better and keep it up.
Okay. Thank you. We'll call you back if we need you.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Are there any in the audience who would be proponents of this application? You're separate. Are there any that would be opponents of this application? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing at seven oh two. And have a discussion among the planning commission.
Well, it sounds like he's done a lot to improve the property. It sounds like he uh, is really concerned about the neighbors and has tried to make a good, a good showing with the neighbors. And I see no reason why he wouldn't be able to put, if he meets the criteria, put a nice canopy to put his nice motorhome in.
I, I would agree.
Any other comments?
Nope, I agree. Yeah.
Any other comments? It seemed to me that in our motion that we could qualify the foundation to meet the billing inspector's requirements. Because it seems from what has been said that the manufacturers of this canopy have probably done hundreds or thousands of them. And maybe, maybe the post holes that he has described would meet the billing inspector's criteria.
And just to clarify, there is a building permit already to go. We just had to wait till the conditional use. And so all the criteria for that will be in here and will be reviewed. It's all, it's already attached in here. We just have to wait till this gets approved in order for the building inspector to approve this part of it.
So we don't have to make that decision tonight.
No, that will be made by the building.
Simply add a qualification.
Correct.
That it would be.
Yeah. You're approving whether you're going to allow it to be built and the building official will determine how it's going to be anchored.
Okay. Uh, with that, did entertain any motions?
Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, approve the application recommending the conditions of approval listed below to be required in order to assure that the application is consistent with the findings in the review decision criteria. Oh, here we go. Um, a motion, sorry, I'm reading the wrong part. Is a motion to approve application CU twenty three dash zero two, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in staff report and the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report. The setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
Before you have, we have any second. What would you think if we added the wording that the footings, anchors or foundation would meet the requirements of the billing inspector?
That is in the condition.
That, that is, that is in, that's in part of the condition.
Add that in the motion.
Yeah.
Okay, did you get it, Angela?
Yes, it's already a condition.
Okay.
Commissioner. I would second that motion. I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Let's have a roll call vote.
Uh, Commissioner Wood, sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Meltzer.
Yes.
Commissioner Walthius.
Yes.
Commissioner Journey.
Yes.
Commissioner Branton.
Yes.
And Commissioner White.
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Costas.
Okay, the planning commission has approved it.
I will get ahold of you on Monday and let you know next steps.
Can you hear okay back there? It has been approved. It will be subject to the billing inspector's requirements as far as the footings, foundation or anchors are concerned. That's between you and he. And welcome to Sweet Home.
It'll be a little bit of a, I'll contact you when we're done here. So, okay. Nope. You too.
Hey, that, that one is done. We'll move on to the second application. Uh, we'll open this public hearing at seven oh six. The applicant is seeking a variance to allow for a three foot front yard setback to the carport on Larch Street. A nineteen foot setback from the street side, which is twenty second Avenue. And to allow for two instead of four off street parking spaces aside from the carport. The subject property is zone commercial highway C two. The comprehensive plan designation is high density residential R three. For the Sweet Home Municipal Code Amendments approved on July twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Duplexes shall be allowed as permitted use in the C two zone. Effective August twenty four, two thousand and twenty three. The minimum setbacks in the C two zone are as follows. Front yard, twenty feet and street side, twenty feet. Two off street, and that's Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two zero point zero five zero. Two off street vehicle parking spaces required for duplex. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four four point zero six zero parentheses A. Uh, so is there any ex parte information? You got that out of order? Any conflict of interest?
No.
No.
And any personal bias? Okay, with that, we'll turn the time over to Angela to speak slowly. A little slower, not slowly.
I try, Henry, I promise.
And look this way when you talk. So we can read your lips.
I don't know if I can do that read at the same time here. I've got too many things on here. All right, give me just one second here to get back where I was. All right, so as stated, the applicant is seeking a variance to allow for a three foot front yard setback to the carport on Larch Street and nineteen foot setback from the street side on twenty second and to allow for two instead of four off street parking spaces aside from the carport. Uh, subject property is owned commercial highway. Um, the property is not in the special flood hazard zone. It does not have any wetlands. Um, has access from twenty second Avenue and Larch Street. The subject property has access to city water services and twenty second Avenue and in the alley abutting the north property line of the subject property. Subject property has access to city sewer services in the alley abutting the north property line of the subject property. The planning commission may allow a variance for, from a requirement or standard of this development code after a public hearing conducted in accordance with the type three review procedures provided that the applicant provides evidence that the following circumstances substantially exist. The variance is necessary because the subject development code provision does not account for special or unique physical circumstances of the subject site, existing development patterns or adjacent land uses. A legal lot determination may be sufficient evidence of a hardship or purposes of a variance. And to give a little background before I go into this, this property was, had started development a long time ago. Um, the owner, former owner put a foundation in and then just never finished anything else. There was a construction trailer from the history that I've gotten and nothing else was done there. So, um, so it was just a piece that was never fully developed. Um, so Steph finds the subject property is in the commercial highway C two zone. Duplexes in the C two zone are subject requirements of the R three zone. Uh, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one for approved via ordinance bill number fourteen for twenty twenty three, ordinance number thirteen twenty one, approved July twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. The minimum setbacks in the R three zone are fifteen feet from the front yard, twenty feet to the entrance of a garage or carport, five feet per story for interior side yard, fifteen feet street side yard and fifteen feet rear side. Uh, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen fourteen zero six zero. Off street parking uses identified in the zone shall comply with the provisions of chapter seventeen point four four. Uh, Sweet Home, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen two zero zero six zero A. And per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four four zero six zero A, two total off street vehicle parking spaces are required for a duplex. The front yard by definition is the lot line abutting Larch Street. Um, the definition of front yard is a yard between side lot lines and measured horizontally at right angles to the front lot line from the front lot line to the nearest point of the building. Any yard meeting this definition and abutting on a street other than an alley shall be considered a front yard. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen zero four zero two zero. Per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen fourteen zero six zero, the minimum front yard setback in the R three zone is fifteen feet. And the minimum setback to the garage or carport is twenty feet. The subject property is a preexisting nonconforming smaller lot. The applicant is asking for a variance to allow for a three foot setback from the front property line to the carports. Per the Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen four four zero six zero A, only two off street parking spaces are required for a duplex. The applicant is showing two off street parking spaces off twenty second Avenue and therefore will not need a variance for the parking spaces. Um, they also, he also will not need, which I apologize, I should have put this in here, but it wasn't applicable. Um, does not need a nineteen foot setback from twenty second Avenue because the structure itself is back the required feet and the driveway can be right up to the sidewalk. So there's no carport or structure in, within that setback requirement. So the only variance that is needed here is that three foot setback that is to the carports instead of having a twenty foot setback. Such variance is necessary for the preservation enjoyment of substantial property right of the applicant possessed by the owners of their properties in the same vicinity or district. An economic hardship shall not be the basis for a variance request. Per the applicant's comments, the variance to the front setback is necessary to allow for the construction of two carports on a preexisting nonconforming lot. The request shall allow the applicant to comply with the R three off street parking requirements per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one four point zero seven zero A. The authorization of such variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property in the vicinity or district in which the property is located or otherwise conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. Steph finds that the variance will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to the property in the vicinity or district in which the property is located. Currently, large street residents park in the public right of way. The carports and off street parking spaces help alleviate some of the on-street parking issues along Larch Street. The variance does not conflict with the objectives of any city plan or policy. Steph, or sorry, the need for variance is not self-imposed by the applicant or property owner. For example, the variance request does not arise as a result of the property line adjustment or land division approval previously granted to the application. Steph finds that the variance is self-imposed. The subject property is in the C two zone. Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two zero point zero two zero A through X lists the permitted uses in the C two zone. The applicant purchased the property in the current condition and with the knowledge that is a preexisting nonconforming lot. The applicant has a variety of other uses that could be developed listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point two two zero point zero two zero or could design a duplex that conforms to the lot standards of the R three zone. The variance requested is a minimum variance which could, would alleviate the identified hardship. Steph finds that there is no identified hardship due to the variance being self-imposed. The applicant has alternative uses that could be developed to current development standards. All applicable building code requirements and engineering standards shall be met. If approved, the applicant shall comply with the standards in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one four residential high density R three zone. Staff recommendations. Steph finds that the applicant has not met criteria D and E listed in this section three, staff has not recommended any conditions of approval. The planning commission will hold a public hearing in which it may either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. Appeal period, staff recommends that the planning commission decision on this matter be subject to a twelve day appeal period from the date of the decision as mailed. After the planning commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order shall memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following. Move to approve application VR twenty three dash zero three and thereby permit the variance for the subject lot located at thirteen zero seven twenty second Avenue. Sweet Home, Oregon nine seven three eight six. Identified on Lynn County Assessor's Map as thirteen SO one E thirty two B C tax lot zero two seven zero zero. Adopting the findings of fact listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing and decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application VR twenty three dash zero three and thereby, thereby deny the request of a variance for the subject lot located at thirteen zero seven twenty second Avenue, Sweet Home, Oregon nine seven three eight six. Identified on the Lynn County Assessor's Map as thirteen SO one E three two B C tax lot zero two seven zero zero. Adopting the findings of fact, you must specify the setting of a twelve day appeal period from the date of the mailing and decision and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other. Are there any questions?
Can you put the, um, the map of the property up? And describe where the parking would be, could be. Um, let me.
Claire, we'll put it up just a second.
Claire, down by your microphone, down by the microphone where it says your name, that keeps popping up plus and minus. I don't know if that will make it.
Well, thank you.
I'm on it.
So where the white van is that you can see there on the corner, that's where the carports will go. And then off to the corner on uh, twenty second Avenue is where the off street parking will come off of. So if you look at the site plan, um, that was provided, it shows that the, um, the carports will come directly south and then the off street parking will be directly west. So there will technically be four off street parking, two will be under carports and two will just be directly.
So the off street parking cars will be parked in the uh, vision triangle for that corner lot?
No, they'll be up a little bit and they'll have, they'll be required, um, all right, let me get to my own thing here. So he will be required to make it to where the, in that twenty feet over. So we went through a couple of different versions of this. So, but once the building takes place. And we can list that as a condition of approval to make sure that that.
Okay.
Any other questions of the staff?
So I have a, I have a question. Angela, and with So I have a, I have a question, Angela, and with the. So if we approve the carport variance, just three feet back from the property line. How does that affect future development of large street sidewalks, et cetera?
If you see, if you can, can you move it so we can see down much street? Large Street is actually the right away is very large. So it, if you look at the way large street is, they've already accounted for it with the width of it. It's just, it doesn't look like it because all these properties, backyards and cars are parked in it. So I think it's sixty feet wide. It's already, yeah, it's a sixty foot ride wide right away. So it's already accounting for all of that.
Okay.
In there.
What is the current use of the property?
Pretty much just a foundation and it was just a, I don't know exactly what was there. It was a fenced in bunch of stuff from what I was told.
So what, what are all those other structures that are behind the fence there?
So it used to be, so history from former employees have told me that the gentleman that used to live there. Put in the foundation, never went through with it. There was a construction trailer that. Was there that was possibly the residence and then none of the rest of it was ever done. It was just little shacks and sheds that were put on there. So.
So that's what we're looking at is shacks and sheds?
Yeah, eventually. It will all be cleared.
Yeah, I'm distracted.
Yeah, it was if you ever went by it, I only know because I drove by it. I didn't know what was behind the fence, but there was a really tall fence that covered most of it up.
Yeah.
So where that we see all the small buildings, that's kind of where the off street parking would be. Like that, you know, where all those shacks and sheds are on this, on the what left hand side?
Yeah.
Okay.
And where the white van is in the other car, that's where the carports are laying on that side. According to the site plan and the discussions we've had with them.
Wood reports that as I drove past that today. That it looks like the cleaning process has already started. Any other questions of the staff?
If I'm, if I may, I would just add that given the size of large street, the sixty foot wide right of way. And it's a dead end street. There's really no need for that. Any future? If we ever had funding for completing the street with proper curbs and sidewalks. That same, I doubt we would use more than forty feet of that right of way. If, if that typically a neighborhood's street that would serve this type of use would be no more than a forty foot right of way. And so there's easily ten feet on either side that would essentially go to people's front yards.
Being a corner lot, it always doubles your cost. We again would take precautions to see that we'd have their participation on our street.
Well, a corner lot doubles your cost when you have. You know, development on both those sides. Any improvement in large street would would be limited to just large. And so it would just be that side.
We're looking at it now. The address and the frontage will be on twenty second.
Essentially, well.
So there's, we have two definitions. So front of lot is actually the shortest piece that buts. So the front of the lot is actually large street. But the front of the structure could be twenty second and the address could be twenty second. So there's two different definitions. What's confused is people all the time. But the front of building could be twenty second, but the front of the lot is actually large street.
Can we clarify that in proceedings? The address is on twenty second.
And that won't change. It's just a definition thing of which the building doesn't have to face a certain way. It's just the way that the lot is described when it comes to setbacks.
And that, yeah, that's simply for the purposes of of determining what the setbacks are.
So I have a question about Chief Tyler's comments. He said he would like more information, but then there's this other little paragraph afterwards.
That was my comments to him. And I added them in there so that you would see that his comments did it answered that there's access from the alley from twenty second and from large street.
And was he satisfied with your responses?
Yeah.
Well, let's invite the applicant to come forward. Put your name and address.
James Hurley, thirteen oh seven twenty second avenue or three five eight nine zero Sanium Highway.
Tell us a little bit about your plan for the property and what you'd like to do.
Is there any way to kind of just use that as your?
Yeah.
Plan? So I do have a set of plans here if people would like to look at them. Trying to get a three two in there for each level. And then a carport for covered parking. And when I walked a lot and went to buy it, I saw it was C two, but it said single family residential. So I thought, well, we could build on it and then we're kind of stuck with a duplex area. And I'd like to use this foundation as the saves money in the cost of project. And this is actually from the front is actually twenty feet. It wasn't until I started developing the sidewalk that I realized right at this point, I'm down to seventeen feet. Somewhere in this line apex is actually what I'm only asking for right here. I can move these other two up here to meet the criteria where you're at. So this is the carport. I like to have a covered parking area. And add a little storage in the staircase for each unit to have a little storage area. So it's a nice theme duplex with, as you can see, this was all garbage. We've already. All they think three dump trailer bowls of garbage out of there. There's a scrap pile right now and. This is all blackberry. So as they said, the road was very large. And when I went to purchase it, I thought. This would kind of look down and saw the power poles and I was like, well, that should be about the purple line because usually they set those on there. And realizing, so this is what I'm asking for, this little piece right there that's kind of messing me all up.
Do you mind bringing this down so the commissioners can see us? Thanks.
Here's the. We're gonna do a. Okay. So we're trying to do a three two top and bottom level. Like I said, I'd like to have a nice carport or parking and storage in the area or air form. The value of a three two is. Twenty to thirty thousand from a two one. So this gets you better in three to four hundred dollars in a per month. Plus families can have more bedrooms for kids because. Let me kid you have, and we're trying to keep the cost down to be kind of a low income housing. Viable. So this is what we're planning on right here. And like I said, this is kind of what's messing us up. Back. This is actually twenty feet on the site plan.
So you're, you're planning to park ours like this?
Yeah.
Off a large?
Yep, off large. So it's this. Apex right there. When I get to seventeen. I could move the property mine out. I'd be. Or we just go with the variance.
How many cars are we going to be able to park?
I did a space of eight. But I'd rather have ten so I can do two and then two. So you get four off street parking. If you'd like me to go more and I have alley access back here, I could technically put two more spots and pave it. It's extra cost for me, but. It's just where to fit on this little thirty five hundred square feet. I've tried to do every. Spot I could think of and way to draw a plan open. My contractor brain doesn't look in every way. It might be something, but this is the best way. If he wants to see anything I would.
And just to clarify, he's not required to do any more than two off street parking. It's two total for the duplex. So it's not two for each side. It's just two total and the garage or carport one for each. So.
Just a thought that comes to my mind and. Perhaps. On the shorter side, that can be a compact car parking only.
The shorter side, which is the carport side, has to be standard parking sizes. So has to be regulation, which is, I think roughly. Police nineteen by, yeah, nine by nineteen and I can't remember exactly. I have to go look it up to be honest with you, but.
I looked up with the average parking and they said eight feet, but I don't feel that's enough, especially if you have. Two different tenants and trying to park in between. I mean, the new builds that you have is twenty feet wide. And you can barely get two cars in there to open it. So.
The city's requirement for parking lots is typically nine feet wide. And that's generally more typical.
If I can get them ten feet by twenty feet out there.
That's a Costco size.
Fit your whole truck in there.
So Mr. Really, I've had a couple of questions. So there was a, there is an existing. Foundation.
Yes.
And how old is that foundation and is it up to code? Is that really something you're able to use?
Yes, I've spoke with Sean Eaton, the Galing Inspector, and he has gone by and checked into it. And said everything is good to go and that you can build on.
And there was also some verbiage in the application that you had considered some other projects to put on this property. And what were they and why did you decide on this one?
The single family home, to build a single family home on that small of a lot. However, the residents or the zoning does not allow for a single family home. So which would in. All reality would be the same parking situation by the time you built the home versus a duplex. So it's the same setback as R three.
Is, is this variance financially driven?
Not really. It's the lot that is forty feet. If you take a sixty foot lot and you ask to have forty feet to get in there. Then how do you, how you have twenty feet of living space to do? So. Well, what can you build in the twenty foot on a sixty foot small? I think there's four. Of these lots in the city of Sweet Home. I just happen to be lucky and buy one of them.
If there was a smaller structure built though, these setbacks could be met?
Yes. And. You would tear out part of the foundation that's already there. So we incur more garbage and more stuff hauled off the lot and adding which environmentally would like to avoid.
You basically. You can still do a duplex.
What's that?
You can still do a duplex.
Yes. That three feet off. Could try to get it in there. Just that, like I said, it's that one little space that I'm trying to keep the foundation for the minimal construction in the area. The all houses around it. So I am kind of not understanding what was the C two zoning. It's all residential there. I can get the duplex in there, but like I said, the small little thing is catching me up.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So you, if you get this approved so that that little hang up doesn't hang you up anymore. You are basically taking a lot full of junk and trying to build a livable home on it.
Two livable spaces. You'll have two. Water meters and two sewer connections. Going to improve the neighborhood and the value of the property versus what's been there for. Everybody can go back of just a bunch of garbage. As far as I know, that's what everybody said. So.
If I could share a sentence, it'd be improving the neighborhood one lot at a time.
There you go. That's what I try to do.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, we'll let you.
Thank you very much.
Let's close that public hearing at seven thirty six.
Wait, before you close it, you need to ask for opponents or any other proponents.
Arguing, go ahead.
Proponent testimony or?
Any other proponents?
I'm sorry. Is there any testimony in favor of the application? Did, did you want to talk? Any testimony in opposition? Maybe Molly would like to oppose that. I don't know. Okay, and any neutral testimony? We, we've done our duty by asking that. So now we'll close it at seven thirty six. And we will discuss that as a planning commission and with the staff.
So my concern, my only concern is that for a variance, one of the conditions. Is that it's not a self-imposed reason. And this is regardless of the, the nice plan, that there can be a different plan. That does not self-impose this need. So that's my concern. Which is a criteria for approving a variance in our code. As much as I like the plan, because I do like the plan and I sympathize with having that three feet for an awkward lot. Making the dream plan not possible. But I don't, I unfortunately, I don't feel like I can approve it. Yeah, I don't feel it meets our criteria for granting a variance.
So we've been in this position before with other applicants. And for me, again, the bottom line is, does this fit the definition of what the variance is? That's kind of the bread and butter of our zoning ordinance. And I know that a duplex is allowed on a corner and that's a good way to use space. So again, I'd have to agree with the two other commissioners who've spoken that the plan is good. But the. Proposal doesn't meet our definition of variance.
I would disagree with them. I, I think. When he was talking about the you only using forty feet of the road instead of sixty feet of it. I, I would disagree.
I think. Because this road is at the end and is never going to go anywhere. And we do want these type of situations cleaned up. We need housing. I know we have the rules for, we have the codes for a reason. And the idea of the variance is because we see something that we can allow a little bit of the. In those, those codes. I think this is a good reason for that. I, I don't think that three feet is going to make a difference in traffic or safety. And if it means that we have junk pile cleaned, I, I hate these junk piles. I, I think that we shouldn't allow it. I think that there's a good. Uh, I, I think that we shouldn't allow it. I think that there's a good reason. To allow this, this variance.
So there still could be development of a duplex on that lot where it still looks nice, just not that design.
Well, true.
Yeah.
But I think he's worked out the best. Trying to work out the best that he can to make the best use of space. And. It's not much there to work with.
Well, we should all be grateful that that. Particular piece of property is being cleaned up. That and some adjacent properties are real eyesores. Well. Does staff have anything more to say? We seem to be a little divided here.
I don't know that I have anything that would undivide you. I would only say that. We are down one member and. Uh, and so if it does make a difference, I would just remind the commission that. If there is a, uh, if a, an application. Uh, results in a tie, it is, is deemed denied. And so. Your options would be that if, if, if you appear to be tied, I would say that's going to result in a denial. Um, another option to you is to continue the public hearing to a future meeting. Where you would have hopefully a full, uh, commission and not an odd number of people.
Can I ask a question of staff? About the existing foundation. It, so the existing foundation, the way is. Trying to use that existing foundation as part of. This need for the variance. That's really the need so that they use the foundation and not have to.
Not, not have to rip it all up and start all over.
Okay.
I haven't spoken much. Excuse me. I think we've got two ways to look at this. One of them. Is we could get things approved tonight with the. Proposal that he would come back with a little different designing. That's possible. I tend to agree with Nancy. I, I think her reasoning is all good. It's a dead-end street. Uh, they're not going to go anywhere. And I think that would kind of be my recommendation. Also. So with that said. Does anybody have anything further? To say?
I just don't feel like we can make a decision based on things that may or may not happen in the future. And I don't think that we could bend our standards that we have adopted. Or something. Bigger where there's more money to be made when something could be suitable for that property. And we wouldn't need to be here this evening making a decision on this.
We call the applicant back and we'll reopen this.
Ready.
The way it looks right now. I'm not saying there's going to be a tie. But a tie means denial. How would you feel to alter those plans? Slightly so that we can maybe. Get an approval tonight and let you get rolling.
Um, I get, can I ask Angela? If it's only two parking spots, does that mean I have to have two covered also?
You have to have a garage or carport and two off-street parking. And just so you know, even if he were to propose an, uh, a new plan tonight, we could not approve that. You would have to continue the meeting and he would have to submit additional. Information to be seen at another meeting. Uh, we could not do that tonight. So it would have to be continued to another time.
That's it. So the, the whole variance is behind. The current foundation that has been installed. Um, it's not trying to get a bigger house on it. It's not that. It's. Basically, you've had it into what he had, but because of the parking, I have to build the carport. So it's not trying to get a big, bigger thing in there. It's. The fact that saving the foundation, less construction, less noise, less everything in the area to disrupt the neighbors or the neighborhood. And it has everything except for that corner. So if I could drop off the corner of the carpet, I would to make it. But as we said, twenty feet for a carport is usually what they want. The variance of three feet.
Let me come back to Angela a minute. Our next meeting is when?
September twenty-first.
So that's another option that we have as a planning commission is to continue. This hearing to September twenty-first.
Or.
Allow you a little time to.
Or October fifth.
Talk about other possibilities.
Okay.
And love. Speaking when I was.
Sorry, uh, um, the one after that, it's either the twenty-first or October fifth.
Would September twenty-first give you time to think things through?
Please.
It's two weeks, it's two weeks from today.
I personally kind of hate to see us get a tie tonight. And then it's basically denied. And it's possible that. Another time we'll have that seat filled. And we, we would have an odd number and. It might not be tied. I, I can't say what correction that would go.
No problem.
But.
I guess.
I think I would suggest that somebody makes motion that we continue this to September twenty-first. I'm not going to make that motion because I'm chairing.
So can I just make a comment if, if. If another proposal is brought before us at a future meeting. The issue of altering the current foundation is still going to be potentially an issue. You're trying to avoid that.
I'm trying to avoid the environmental impact of tearing it out, which also includes some economic.
Yeah, the last factor.
But mainly it's just the fact that everything's right there. I pulled all the garbage out. I pulled everything out. But the variance, I could start on the building right now.
Right. But you.
It's hardly, I have to get the building permitted, but I haven't, I got this drawn up, but I haven't finished the engineering. Waiting on that.
Altered the foundation. He might not have to be here, right?
Need a variant.
He would not need a variance.
Depends. It depends on the design.
Okay.
I can't say, I can't say either way. So.
Depending on what design he proposed to us, he may or may not have to be in front of us.
I did. I don't have, what's his setback on the side? Like keep the carport over to that, to the off-street parking.
Well, doesn't, it doesn't matter. So in any of the residential zones, the setback to a garage or carport is twenty feet. So and right now you have less room on Twenty Second Avenue than you have on Large Street. So it's best to keep it on Large Street, in my opinion.
Continue. We got someone else in the other chair.
You'd like?
Well.
Up to them.
So.
Should we?
I have to close the public hearing again before we discuss it.
Okay.
We'll close it at seven fifty. Continue discussion with the planning commission.
Great use for the property. It's a. Beautiful design. We have criteria that we must follow. It's our job.
Laura.
I mean, I. I don't know. My decision would be the same because again, like, I feel like my, our hands are tied and with the code. Like we have to know the code. But I won't say no to a continuance if that's what people want. I, that I will agree to a continuance.
You know, it's going to take a lot of convincing to convince me that. We shouldn't approve it. Uh, I like the idea where. We're talking about three feet of a road that may or may not ever be. Developed. I, I, you know, to be honest with you, I. Progressions always talked about, but when we have the opportunity to do it. Uh, we sit here and. Banter over three feet. So.
Well, it's not, unfortunately, the three feet, it, it's the actual. Request for the variance itself. It's not that the, it's only three feet, but that the variance request is actually invalid. That's how like, I feel like we can approve a variance request when someone has self-imposed the need for it. And unfortunately, even though it's so, I mean, he didn't build the foundation himself. He didn't create that need. Um, but like, but deciding to use that foundation was deciding to create a need for a variant.
Point of information, the, the setback on the large side is twenty feet. The building itself. On one corner is, it meets that setback. Um, and on the other corner, it's three feet. The carport. Still needs to be outside that setback. And in this case, almost the entire carport. Is, is within the, is not in compliance with the setback. So it's, it's certainly much more than three feet that's at issue here.
Yeah, it's not this. It's like this times.
Because the setback measures to the carport, not to the main structure.
Yeah.
And that, and that's my point is that he has options. There are other things that he could do with that property and certainly the. Keeping the foundation. Is advantageous, but. But there's a but.
If we take a vote right now, it appears that that would probably be denied. If we had a tie, it's the same as a deny. If somebody makes a motion that we continue this to September twenty-first. And give them an opportunity to come and work with Flair and Angela and get things worked out and come back to us. It would have a greater chance.
And the next vote, having a full commission may have a favorable commission result.
And I'm sure that professionally and professionally with you, you can put some heads together and come up with a plan. I would like to have somebody make a motion. One way or the other, you know.
I make a motion that we continue this discussion. Uh, on September twenty-first.
I would second that.
Have a motion in the second. Take a roll call vote.
Just to clarify, that's to continue the public hearing itself to the next, to the twenty-first.
All right, we'll.
We need to take a vote on that. Vote of, there needs to be a vote on that motion.
Okay. All in favor of a continuation?
I.
I. Okay, so there's a little work to do. And hopefully we can. Work with you and accommodate you. And somehow appreciate your appreciation for cleaning up. Something that is a total eyesore, eyesore. We appreciate that.
Uh, one second. I need a motion to, if there's any opposed, we only did it just to make sure.
I can't do anything wrong because. Are there any opposed? I think it was unanimous.
Okay, just have to verify that. So thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll see on September twenty-first.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, okay, let's see what we've got. Do you want to give us some staff updates on?
Sure. Um, right now we have two partitions. Oddly enough, I have not had a lot of partitions this year, so I'm only on the third one of the entire year. Um, one's on four, one, two, two, highway twenty, which is, we call it the haunted house right here by Cedar Shack. So they're actually going to be. Upgrading that house, but they're also dividing the lot. So we're going to a partition for that lot right there. And then the other one we have is on Thirteenth Street. This is our very first Senate Bill four fifty-eight partition where someone can partition a duplex. So this is the very first example of that. So I get to learn. Get a whole lot more criteria to get this to work, but. It's good. We needed to do it. You know, there's people that are interested in doing it, so might as well just jump right in. Uh, it just passed and just approved, so. Um, that'll be an interesting one to be able to separate those. Um, another one is, um. As of Monday, my title will now be, uh, the Tourism and Economic Development Coordinator. So I will be replaced here. Whenever someone is hired and trained. So you will not see my face unless I come to report to you. So. Um, but you will probably see it for a while until the new person gets trained.
You get a pay rate.
Well, Blair know what to do without you.
Actually, I'm still working for him.
I still get to, I'm still her boss. That's the, that's the great thing about.
Just moving.
In a new capacity.
So.
We're moving. I've had secretaries, so I know what we're talking about.
Yep. So I just won't be at the front anymore and I, I'm in the closet, as we call it here soon and then, uh, but I will still be doing a lot of events and still be doing a lot of the stuff I currently do. Just the planning portion will go to someone else. So.
So typically for positions, we recruit internally first or we, we give an option up, uh, up, uh. An opportunity for internal candidates first and before we advertise it externally. And in this case, we have a very good, uh, internal candidate, at least one. And, uh, some time for others to, to pop their. To show their interest. So I, I think we'll be, I think we'll be all right. Uh, and fortunately she's still around. Right? So, um, well, like I said, the, the Angela's position would be, uh, hopefully there's an internal candidate we have in mind for that, that, that might work out. Um, and so if that does, then we're in, in great shape and Angela's still around to help get that person up to speed. So we're excited by the, the changes and. There'll be some growing pains, but nothing we can't handle. Yeah. Did you have any other update?
Thank God.
Yeah, you'll just see my face more out in the community than you will in here. So. Um, no, um, I'll let you do the TSP master plan for painting.
So, uh. Transportation System Plan update is still going on, uh, moving forward. As part of that plan, there is a. It's part of the project, but it's slightly different than the plan. There's the, they're putting together a North Sweet Home area plan. Which essentially focuses on. Uh, the area north of the railroad tracks, uh, essentially from the, the old mill property and east. And, uh, the intent behind that area plan is to kind of flesh out, uh, the road network of what we'd like to see to make sure that. There is good circulation, uh, both within that area, but also, uh, with other parts of the city and, uh, that we have adequate crossings of the railroad. And, um, alternatives for east-west travel. Uh, so we had a, a great little meeting this morning to kind of brainstorm some ideas for that. It'll also go into. Some of the land use designations for that area as well to kind of, uh, look at both the transportation. And the uses in the area and, and see what might serve that area best. So that's going well. Uh, it. Moving forward sometime, I think the target now is to be done with that effort by next May. To have adoption of the whole updated transportation system plan. Uh, related to that, actually, I just got a, I got a message earlier this week that the, the last. Um, portion of the old mill property DEQ has issued a conditional no further action letter for it. And so. What that means is that, uh, it DEQ is no longer a barrier to redevelopment. And that's the main thing when it comes to getting a road punched through. The property owner is, is willing to dedicate land for a road. The main thing that's been keeping that from happening is that until now, the city hasn't been able to accept it. Um, because of the environmental conditions of the property, but, uh, with the conditional no further action designation for the whole property. Um, that, uh, makes that barrier a bit smaller. So, uh, we're, we're taking baby steps. Uh, we're getting. Uh, we're getting there. Um, what else? Uh, park system master plan is uh, update is going forward also. And um, there will be some outreach soon. If you haven't already seen it, we've got a survey that went out. And we've uh, we'll have a booth at the Harvest Festival and um, lots of other stuff to try to get more feedback from the public on that. So if you haven't, um, if you haven't got anything from the city when it comes to a survey or haven't seen anything, let us know because we're we're trying to make sure that everybody gets access. We want as much input as we can on that. Um, what else?
Have there been any grant awards?
So we are, we I'll I'll sing Angela's praises. She did a fantastic job for our um, our Sankey Park Phase Three grant application that we put in. Um, and we have gotten word that we are on the recommended list. Uh, the list of of projects for recommended for funding. So it's not a full award yet. But um, typically, all of the projects on the recommended list eventually are um, actually get, you know, a letter of approval to move forward. So we're very excited about that. Other in other grant news, um, we're, I I haven't told Angela this, but it's not going to be her job eventually. So, well, um, there's a, uh, we're going to be pursuing a grant for, again, for an update to our comprehensive plan. And um, and hopefully that is successful. Um, oh, we also received a grant. Uh, it's this is one of those things where the state makes requirements and then they provide some money to meet those requirements, which we're grateful they're at least helping us meet the requirements, even if the requirements seem kind of out there. But um, there is a requirement, we are required to put together a housing production strategy. Uh, we went through the housing needs analysis uh, a lot earlier this year. Uh, the next step is a this state mandated housing production strategy. Essentially, the difference between the two is the needs analysis tells you what housing you need. The production strategy is how you're going to get there. And so um, we have received a notice that we are getting that grant for that to be covered by the state also. Um, that'll be another project for us to work on uh, in the coming months.
Can I just get a little report on the make the town project?
You might have noticed a few buildings painted. Yeah, um, that's been really wonderful and we've had a great response. The only downside to the whole thing is that we haven't been able to paint as many buildings as we wanted. Uh, we've we've got a, there's actually a fair number that we're not, probably not going to be able to get to. And um, we have already started contacting those folks and um, offering to provide the paint still if they can uh, get the labor to to get it done. Because really what it comes, when it comes down to it, it's not uh, having enough paint. It's having enough hands to put that paint on the on the buildings. It's the real wrinkle. We're very grateful to Fitzpatrick Painting and Construction. They have done an amazing job. I cannot sing their praises enough. And um, they've done such an amazing service to the city because the value of what they've provided is huge. It's it's ten weeks, a crew for ten weeks. You know, just one building alone, I was talking with Dave Bauer, uh, owner of Steelhead. And uh, and I asked him, I that what do you think you would have paid if you had to pay to have your building painted? And he was like, probably twenty five grand, you know, uh, and that that building alone. So we're, we're really thrilled with what they've done. And um, I just really can't sing their praises enough. So if you ever have an opportunity to uh, give any word of mouth recommendations or write any reviews anywhere, um, I highly recommend um, singing their praises because they've they've done a fantastic job and they've been very, very giving.
On that note, Adam, our communications manager, actually has cards that you can scan the QR code and go directly to leading them. Any kind of comments about that? So he actually has cards that you can do that with if anyone is ever interested in that. So.
Could they maybe be like honor guests at our harvest festival?
So actually, the um, there is a ceremony that is going to happen at eleven forty five on stage. That was determined today.
Oh, I didn't even know about this.
Yeah. There's all kinds of things that are planned. So yes, at eleven forty five during Harvest Festival, there will be a presentation to Fitzpatrick Painting. Um, and so they are going on and it's also one of our sponsors. Um, so we're just spread the word. You know, we want to make sure to show them as much appreciation as possible. And uh, we will be doing a presentation toward them. So um, Adam will be sending out some communications about that in the next coming weeks.
Yep, they definitely deserve the love. The last thing that I have to bring up is that we are participating with uh, R D I Rural Development Initiatives is um, is conducting a leadership program in Sweet Home. And it is, it involves six sessions um, that are designed to um, take participants and kind of guide them through what it, what is involved in um, community leadership. From having an idea of something you want to improve in your community, to working with all the different organizations and groups, how the city works, how other things work to try to build capacity. Uh, if you've, as as you all probably know, it, a lot of folks, when they look at the possibility of being on a committee or on the planning commission or even running for city council, there's a lot of uh, people that feel pretty nervous about that. They feel like they just don't know enough or um, or they there's some barrier keeping them from volunteering in those ways. Or they feel like they just, you know, need some training. We really need to have some sort of pipeline to get new blood into these organizations. Because um, I mean, their opinions are just as valid as any of ours. We want to make sure that people feel like they can um, put their time in and better their community. So we are um, trying to spread the word and make sure that people know if you know of anyone or have any recommendations of anyone that you think would definitely benefit from a program like that, please uh, talk to me and I'll get you set up with all the the information. I also highly recommend if any of you would like to participate. Um, it's a great program. Angela's been through it in the past. Uh, we have other other folks in the community that have uh, been in leadership positions that have gone through it. And so we um, we highly recommend it. Uh, please uh, let me know if you have some interest.
What's the funding for it?
It's it's grant funded and city funded. Uh, so the the there, the Ford Family Foundation is has can uh, is some of the funding comes from them. Sweet Home Community Foundation has has joined in to fund it and the city council also directed some funding toward it as well.
It's a very beneficial program. Um, and there's a lot of useful information and you work as a cohort, as a team, and you go through um, different projects. Um, getting to know your team, but also um, coming up with a project that you all work on together. And so I found it, I actually did it while I was working for the watershed council. Um, and I found it very beneficial. I actually still use my materials. I brought them out the other day.
And in this program, there's actually both an adult component and a youth component. So there are opportunities for youth as young as middle school age to participate as well. So uh, if any, anyone who comes to mind, please send it my way.
I'd like to just drop a suggestion that was shared with me. Whether we go anywhere or not, but we read about the restoration of the band shell. And uh, the suggestion that came to me was, well, why not turn it around and do an amphitheater up the hill?
So, so the entirety of the project, um, so the actual grant was written for um, not only the bandstand, but it is also a trail system that will go up behind the bandstand. The ADA portion of the trail system will come from Fourteenth Avenue, will have a slight engineered slope that will come up, that will be for ADA accessible. As it gets behind the bandstand, there will be landings that will flatten out because there'll be a dirt trail coming up from one side ADA. Those landings will also be able to be doubled as amphitheater seating so that you will be able to use it as amphitheater seating in the future. Um, so it's being designed for that exact purpose to have multiple ways to view it. Um, it will be up a little bit. It will be fully ADA accessible. And we will also be able to connect upper and lower Sankey Park, which we haven't been able to do, including a sidewalk that is going to be going from upper to lower Sankey Park.
The intent is to have kind of a double sided structure that uh, can face, face both the hillside or face the rest of the park, depending on the need or the event.
Anything else or does anybody want to go home? Meeting's over.
Thanks.
Thank you all.